I reconvene from closed session and I have nothing to report out. So we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:21 PM. And I will now call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, August the 14th, 2024. This time is 6:21 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting will use closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, August 16th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, August 18th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.eltgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, that will move us into our call to order and roll call. And starting the roll call off, I will go with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Spies.
Present.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
All are in attendance.
All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement and assisting is our Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Mewoc, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
Thank you for that at this time. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would like to invite Mark Jansen, if you're still here, to please lead us this evening.
That's a nice time, Mark.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. At this time, please just join us for a brief moment of silence. All right, may I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Section 3 for the closed session, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements. And that item is 4.1, which are Proclamations Recognizing August 2024 as American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month.
Wonderful. Well, at this time, I would like to call forward both of our honorees this evening, Sister Helena Madera Silmi and Musa Abedrabo. I said it right. You can both come forward and then we're going to read some of the covenants here. All right, so American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, August 2024, whereas the city of Elk Grove takes great pride in supporting individual religious freedoms and is strengthened by the diverse religious and cultural traditions of its residents, including those who practice Islam. And whereas Muslims around the world and in the United States specifically constitute a racially and culturally diverse group that is bound together by a shared belief in diversity as strength and unity as power. And whereas American Muslims are deep rooted in American and Californian history and help build our nation and state. And now I'm going to read portions for Musa and then Councilmember Spies will read regarding with Sister Helena. So whereas Musa Abedrabo is a Sergeant and President of the Elk Grove Police Officers Association, he is highly professional, respectful, and always looking to do what is right for the employees, the police department, and the city as a whole. And whereas Sergeant Abedrabo's exemplary service has earned the respect and admiration of colleagues and the community alike, fostering positive relationships and building bridges of understanding. And whereas Sergeant Musa Abedrabo's dedication to service, professionalism, and commitment to upholding the law serves as an inspiration to all. Councilmember Spies.
Sister Helena Madera Silmi, a Latina Muslim, has been involved in community outreach for over 23 years. She is the Charitable Aid Director, excuse me, at Al-Misbah Community Resource Center, which connects charitable donors and the underprivileged community for a better and sustainable life. And Sister Helena is the current President of the Rotary Club of Laguna Sunrise, the first Muslim to serve in that community, leading the club through the magic of Rotary. She is also a member of the city of Elk Grove's Measure E Citizens Oversight Committee. And Sister Helena has been a key figure in making Elk Grove a more inclusive and welcoming city through her dedication to disaster relief, humanitarian aid, and community development. So you want me to read that part?
Sure.
So therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims the month of August 2024 as American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month and recognizes the invaluable contributions of Sister Helena Madera Silmi and Sergeant Abedrabo to the welfare and wellness of the Elk Grove and greater Sacramento community.
Congratulations. Please, would you like to say something? We'll come down and meet you afterwards.
You've got to turn around before they sit down.
Yeah, you had a standing ovation.
I'll defer to her.
Sister Helena.
Salaam alaikum. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, City Officials, and Residents. As a permanent Elk Grove resident, a mother of two Laguna Creek High School graduates, Charitable Aid Director of an Elk Grove nonprofit organization, Al-Misbah, and President of Laguna Sunrise Rotary Club, I am deeply honored to stand before you today as we celebrate the 2024 Muslim-American Heritage Proclamation. This is a momentous occasion that not only recognizes the contributions of Muslims-Americans, but also highlights the rich diversity and equity that our city embodies. As a Muslim Latina, I am proud representative of two vibrant communities that have significantly enriched the culture, cultural, social, and economic tapestry of America. My journey, like that of many others, has been one of resilience, perseverance, and faith. It is a journey that embodies the essence of our community, a spirit that thrives on diversity and inclusion. I am reminded of the beauty of my dual heritage, the warmth and vibrancy of Latin culture intertwined with the rich traditions and values of Islam. This has shaped me into the person I am today. These dual influences have taught me that importance of community, compassion, and the unwavering pursuit of justice and equality. We also acknowledge the challenges and adversities that many Muslims-Americans face in an era where misunderstandings and prejudices can create barriers. It is imperative that we come together to foster mutual respect and understanding. This proclamation is a powerful reminder that our strength lies in our unity and our shared commitment to building a more inclusive and equitable society. I am deeply grateful to live in a city that not only acknowledges but celebrates its diverse cultures, ethnicities, and religions. It is the spirit of inclusivity that makes our community a beacon of hope and a model for others to follow. In conclusion, let us take this opportunity to reflect on the values that unite us and the contributions that make us stronger. Let us continue to build bridges, celebrate our differences, and work together to create a nurturing environment full of hope, understanding, and love for all of humanity. Thank you all, for my friends and family for being here today and my colleagues.
Good luck following that, Sergeant.
Well, the only difference for me is I'm a male. She's Latina, I'm Palestinian. Otherwise, ditto.
Thank you all.
That's all you're going to say? Okay. Well, congratulations again, once again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
How do we want to do this?
Congratulations.
You want to come here? Okay. And you have Kevin? You have the...
Oh, yeah, that. Sister Helena doesn't get that.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Where's her? Oh, there's Kevin's bringing that. Come join. Not the paper part.
What do you want?
The open. Open and the pretty part.
It's the script.
There you go. We're going to get real tight here and make a crescent shape almost.
One, two, three. And take one more. One, two, three.
Congratulations, she wrote. Can we just do another round of applause to two amazing individuals? All right, as we get ready to move on to our next item, we'll give you a minute here. Congratulations, she wrote. All right, as we get ready to move on to our next item, we'll give you a minute here. Yes. All right, next up, we have our public comment. At this time, I will open up public comment opportunity. We have one person signed up to speak, Glenn Smith. Let's give you just a minute here. So we can adequately hear you. Thank you for your patience. All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I'm a longtime resident of Elk Grove and I'm trying to get a carport issue resolved. And last ditch effort, I had a company put it up about six years ago and, I don't know, it's got a call from code enforcement that have to remove it. It's good on one side, I can get it to tweak a little bit, but I'm on a corner lot. I was told the variances were less than what I had, than I have. And because it's a corner lot, it revolves more. My intent is to get it resolved and keep it up. And I'm, I don't know, I'm trying to get it resolved, but yeah. So I'm trying to get any input. If I can, it's close. If I can alter it, I can get it to fall within the guidelines, but I didn't get it permitted. Was told I didn't need permits because it wasn't attached to the house. And I'm willing to pay whatever I have to on that end, but if I can get any input just to try to make it right so I don't have to tear it down, it's covering equipment and so...
Is there staff that we can direct?
Mayor. Mayor, for a second. So Mr. Smith, it's good to see you again because we met at National Night Out and I apologize, I got a message from your wife last night, I just haven't had a chance to call her back yet. But yeah, we're kind of already working with...
You've already started the process.
Jose on it to see what we can do.
Trying to, might need a little more time because on the 15th, the city across the way wanted, or code enforcement was kind of like my deadline, but I don't know what my options are, if there is any.
All right, sounds like Councilmembers Suen and we have staff assisting, so Christopher Jordan will have a follow-up with you. Thank you, sir.
Great. Good to see you, Glenn.
And that is our final public comment. So I will go ahead and close the public comment and turn it over to our City Manager.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jason Behren is City Manager. A few items to report on this evening. First of all, Elk Grove has made another list, this time landing at number 46 in the 50 safest and most affordable U.S. cities to live in, a study recently released by Go Banking Rates. Roseville was also on the list, it came in at number 48, so Elk Grove was the only other jurisdictions in the Sacramento region to make that list. Let's see, we're bringing comedy outdoors again this Friday, August 16th, at District 56 for Friday's in the Grove Comedy Night Performance in partnership with Sacramento Laughs Unlimited. Stand-up acts include Mary Upchurch and Drew Schaefer. Food and drinks will be available to purchase at both shows. Show starts at 8:00. Must be 21 or older to attend. General admission is $10 per person. Tickets can be purchased on the city's website. Couple different traffic, significant traffic alerts. The first is on the west side. The Sacramento area sewer district will close the northbound lanes of Franklin Boulevard between Sims Rowne and Laguna Boulevard to accommodate the Harvest Water Pipeline construction beginning on Tuesday, August 20th. All traffic will be diverted to the southbound lanes, generating one lane traffic in each direction. This work will continue through early 2025. Motors are encouraged to use alternate routes whenever possible in the area. Construction maps and schedules of the project can be found on the sewer district's website at harvestwater.org. And also from Saturday, August 24th to Monday, August 26th, Union Pacific Railroad has scheduled extensive repair work to the railroad crossing at Bond Road that will require a full road closure at that location. Motors should plan for additional travel time to use and use the detours onto Elk Grove Boulevard or Sheldon Roads via Elk Grove Florin Road or Waterman Road during the closure. Pleased to announce that Macy's will hold their grand opening for their new Elk Grove store on Saturday, August 24th at 9:30 AM. Shoppers can enjoy giveaways, live music, local vendors, and more. Macy's will now be located at 7621 Laguna Boulevard, Suite 150 in the old Bye Bye Baby location. Barbecue in the Beat continues. Police Department will host the next one on Saturday, August 24th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Backer Park, which is on Stathos Drive. Officers, firefighters, and city staff will be there to connect with the community members and share information, and a delicious barbecue lunch while supplies last last. And finally, Public Works Department has launched their annual citywide resurfacing project, repair and maintain local streets. Work will occur in several areas of the city. Through the fall, notices will be delivered to homes with work scheduled on their street. Details on the types of treatments and a map of the scheduled treatment areas can be found on the city's website. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions, comments? Yes, Vice Mayor has a comment or question.
So on the citywide resurfacing treatments project and for the Union Pacific Railroad project, are mailers going out to the public for notification in advance so they have a good idea of what's going to happen on those specific dates?
So on the street resurfacing, Sean's here, he can also answer this. My understanding is that there are door hangers left where the resurfacing is happening in those neighborhoods, so they'll be notified exactly when that's occurring and when they're not supposed to park on the street and all that stuff. As far as the railroad goes, Cara, do you know what the notification's like for on the railroad?
For the railroad notification, we're putting out a traffic alert, social media posts. I do not think the city is posting any door hangers, but we are trying to get the word out. We're also putting the message boards out as well.
Sean, anything else to clarify on the road resurfacing?
Yeah, on the resurfacing, we do do door hangers directly to the houses that are adjacent to the street that's being resurfaced, but we also add a lot of signage and message boards throughout the community, kind of giving a heads up as well prior to the resurfacing.
That's good information because obviously as things occur and people, they either not see it on social media or they see something on the door, they definitely know that something is coming, but people have, tend to forget, and we're two weeks out. And so that's, I mean, any information that we could do to help get the word out to the public is definitely value added, so thank you both.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our consent calendar items. At this time, I will open up public comment opportunity. I don't have anyone signed up, I'll close public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve.
With consent?
Yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, next item, 8.1.
And 8.1 is a public hearing to consider resolution approving a determination of public convenience in necessity for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits, a ABC Type 21 license for the Rocket Convenience Store project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Cara Killingsworth and I am the project planner and I'll present to you the request for a public convenience in necessity. The request is for a PCN, a public convenience and necessity determination, to allow for a Rocket Convenience Store to upgrade from a Type 20 alcohol license to a Type 21 license. The Type 20 is an off-sale general, sorry, off-sale beer and wine, and a Type 21 is an off-sale general, and that means beer, wine, and distilled spirits. It's for consumption off-premise where the item is sold only. According to the applicant, the reason for the Type 21 upgrade is to serve additional variety of alcohol and provide ready-to-serve beverages. They've had an existing Type 20 license since 2016 at this location. Rocket Convenience Store is located at the corner of Wilton Road and Grantline Road. It is an Old Town Sheldon. It's part of the 76 fueling station, and the building itself has been there about since Currently, they, again, they do serve beer and wine. It's inside a cooler, and if approved, they will have distilled spirits in the corner behind the counter. They will also have signs saying no consumption on premise, only off. They will have security, they'll have no exterior advertising of the distilled spirits, and as well as anybody who looks 30 years and younger will be carded. So the reason for a PCN request is ABC requires that the applicant obtain this from the council since either it's a high-crime area or it's an over-concentrated area. This application was routed to the police department and reviewed and has determined that this sector, 3108, is not in a high-crime area. That means there's less than 20% reported crimes in this section. So in 2003, there were six crimes. The average between all 26 subsectors is 109. However, it was determined that it is an over-concentrated area. So what is determined over-concentrated is there's more than two off-sale licenses. So currently, there are four off-sale licenses, 221 and 220. And one of the 20 is the Rocket Convenience Center, Convenience Store. The other are the Chevron, which is across the street, Sheldon Liquors, which is also kind of kitty corner on this intersection, and then the other one is actually closer to 99 along Grantline. The sector is pretty large, it goes from 99 all the way to Sloth House Road, so it's a large sector, but so there are four existing. And if approved, the Type 20 would be removed and this would become a Type 21, so instead of two and two, it'd be three and one. So what counts, so what we ask for council to review is the closeness to other retail of alcohol. Is it close to schools, playgrounds? Is it close to residential neighborhoods? And does this retail offer a variety of goods and services? Staff has determined that it's, yes, it is close to other retail that serves alcohol and spirits. But again, it's, it still provides a variety of, this will add a variety of what they already have serving currently. So they do have snacks, they're already serving beer and wine, and they're just adding another variety. They're more than two miles from the nearest park, they're half a mile from the nearest school, so they're not in close proximity to anything that's related to children. The neighborhood, there isn't really a neighborhood in this, in this area. It is part of the Old Town Sheldon, but most of these homes are not an established neighborhood. It's part of the two-acre lots, they're large lots, so it's not really an established neighborhood. And the police department has determined that there's no public concern of the upgrade from Type 20 to Type 21. With that, staff has determined that it's exempt from environmental review per Section 15061, and upgrading the PCN would not bring any physical change to the environment, there's no change to the building, just again, adding distilled spirits versus just beer and wine. And staff is recommending that City Council adopt the resolution to find that it's also exempt from CEQA and that approving the public convenience is a necessity for a Type 21 alcohol license for Rocket Convenience Center, Convenience Store. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is open. Is the applicant here and do they wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Steve Rawlings. I'm here on behalf of United Pacific Apro LLC. For the record, we do concur with the staff's recommendation for approval. I did want to expand on a couple of things that were touched on in the staff report. First of all, United Pacific is a very, very large operator of gas station convenience stores throughout the United, throughout the western United States. They have over approximately 450-plus in the western United States. The majority of those are in the state of California, and they do operate with a lot of alcohol licenses in many of their stores. I mentioned that because they are being a larger corporation, they have a lot of policies and procedures and layers of management to ensure that their operations are clean, efficient, and safe. And I believe that this store is a good reflection of them implementing their policies and procedures. It hasn't been a problem in the past. The driver for this request, and I'm doing a lot of these throughout the state of California, has been the popularity of what they call ready-to-serve or ready-to-drink beverages. We're all familiar with White Claws and Trulys. Previously, those were categorized as a seltzer, which is a malt product, which would fall under a beer and wine type of product, which could be sold under your Type 20 license. But what has gained in popularity are things like Truly Vodka Soda. It is actually made with vodka, even though the alcohol by volume is, according to the website of Truly, is 5.5%, and I can name a whole bunch of beers that are above that. And a standard bottle of wine is somewhere in the 13% to 14% alcohol by volume. However, because there is that bit of distilled spirits, the ABC does require that you obtain a Type 21 license to sell that product. It's becoming very, very popular, not only with grocery stores, but as well as convenience stores, and we are trying to add that product line in all of our stores there. A couple of other things that I like to emphasize is that there's always two employees on duty. We do, we have a fiduciary duty to make sure that our employees are safe, and of course, customers want to feel safe. If they don't feel safe, they quit coming to your location. So that's a, that's a very, very, that's a priority among us. The other thing I wanted to say is that they participate in a mystery shopper program. Mystery shoppers come on a very frequent basis to all of the stores and make purchases, and they do things like try to purchase alcohol without IDs and so on and so forth. And they're graded and employees are terminated if there are any, you know, violations of any ABC or local ordinances. So with that, I am, I'm available for any questions that anybody may have, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll open up public comment opportunity. No... No one has signed up to speak. I'll close public comment. Did you have any closing remarks, or was, are you good?
I know, I'm good.
Okay, excellent. Then I will declare that the public hearing is now closed. Any questions, comments from colleagues looking to the right? No, looking to the left?
No, I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, 8.2.
8.2 is actually three public hearings, and it's for various annexations to community facilities District 2006-1, as well as our street maintenance district and our stormwater drainage fee zone that staff will detail now.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Vijay Maseria, financial analyst for the city. I'm here this evening to present three proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. The city maintains eight special tax districts, which provide funding for infrastructure or services such as police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting, and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of new development projects' approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to the geographic location and building use. The special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. On June 26, 2024, the City Council adopted resolutions of intent to annex these projects into the applicable special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearing. The projects are proposed for annexation into the following special tax districts: CFD 2006-1, Maintenance Services; Street Maintenance District Number One, Zone Two; Stormwater Drainage Fee, Zone Two. This is the 97th annexation to CFD 2006-1, the 10th into Street Maintenance District, Zone Two, and the 67th into Stormwater Drainage Fee, Zone Two. The Stone Springs Estates Map Project was previously annexed into 2003-2, Police Services, CFD 2006-1, Maintenance Services, and Street Maintenance District, Zone Three, on June 28, 2006. This assessment will be levied in perpetuity. The first project is Sutter Campus Expansion Project, which consists of 26.55 non-residential acres located southeast of Laguna Boulevard and Big Horn Boulevard. The second project is Stato's Self-Storage Project, which is also a non-residential, 7.7, 7.71 acres, non-residential acres northwest of Elgro Boulevard and Bruceville Boulevard. And lastly, Stone Springs Estates Map Project, which consists of nine single-family residential units located southwest of Bond Road and Bratchell Road. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you for that. I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1, Annex 97, now open, and open up public comment opportunity. No one is signed up here. I'll close public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1, Annex 97, is closed.
Motion A1.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Of 35 possible votes, 35 affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elgro to levy a special tax at the rate of portion, and described. The measure passes with more than 2/3 of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declared, and the results of the election is available for council consideration, and we can also bundle that up with the ordinance for this action under our new law.
Excellent.
One fell swoop.
Great. Motion A2 and A3.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, I will now declare the public hearing for SMD 2-J, Annex 10, now open, and open up public comment opportunity. No one is signed up to speak on this item. I will close public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SMD 2-J, Annex 10, is now closed, and request the clerk provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest. Of 27 possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the property, 27 affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. A resolution determining levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion B.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now I will declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 67, now open, and open up public comment opportunity. No one has signed up to speak. I'll close public comment opportunity. Declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 67 is closed, and request the clerk please provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
This is the big vote count. There is no majority protest. Of 44 possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property, 44 affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved. The proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, 9.1.
And 9.1 is to receive information on the 2024 climate compass and provide direction as needed.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Carrie Whitlock, Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager. This is the second of three sessions intended to provide information and receive council input on specific potential strategies and actions related to the ongoing update of our 2019 climate action plan. In this session, I will discuss the building energy sector in more detail, what's included, more detail on the emissions and forecast emissions, discussion of state and federal legislation that will impact this section, and then talk about potential strategies for reducing emissions. At the next City Council meeting, we intend to discuss information related to transportation. At each of these sessions, we will be highlighting a short list of potential strategies and actions that we would like to receive council input on for further refinement. The intention is not to make any decision or final determination at this meeting, but to receive guidance to direct the further analysis needed for ultimate decision-making. So I won't go through all the background here, as we covered that in the July 24 meeting. I did just want to highlight that the current update, the climate compass, is intended to be a CEQA-qualified climate action plan, the same as our current cap. And in order to be CEQA-qualified, the document must contain certain technical requirements, including quantifying existing and forecasted greenhouse gas emissions, establishing thresholds for emissions, specifying measures, and standards that would collectively achieve the target emission level and include a monitoring plan. This series of discussions is part of the work to specify the measures and standards to achieve needed greenhouse gas emission reductions, and with further analysis planned subsequent to these discussions in order to quantify the anticipated reduction from any of those measures. So the state emission reduction levels were also discussed at the previous meeting. Just as a reminder, the current 2019 cap includes targets for 2050 at 80% below 1990 levels and for 2030 at 40% below 1990 levels. The more recently adopted 2022 scoping plan outlines goals of 48% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and then 85% reduction by 2045, both of which are not achievable with the current cap measures or legislative-mandated actions that the state has enacted. So the focus this evening, as I said, is on the building sector, which is those items here shown in the red and pink colors. This sector accounts for 38% of our 2021 emissions, and so is a critical area to address for our emission reductions. Here, we've broken out the emissions for the building sector based on those coming from electricity generation, natural gas usage, and from residential and non-residential buildings. For our greenhouse gas inventory, sorry, from our greenhouse gas inventory, residential buildings make up about 68% of emissions from the building sector, and that's fairly evenly split between emissions from electricity and emissions from natural gas. Non-residential buildings are about 32% of the building sector emissions, with a much higher percentage actually coming from electricity. About 80% of the emissions come from electricity for non-residential buildings. There is also a very small amount of emissions from backup generators at non-residential buildings, but that makes up about less than 0.01% of all emissions. So the middle bar you see here is the 2030 emission forecast based on existing state and federal legislation, so the legislative-adjusted forecast. And you can see that the percentage of emissions from the building sector actually increases to 46% in that timeframe. That's partly due to there being an increase in building sector emissions and there being a decrease in overall emissions, particularly in emissions from on-road transportation, decreasing over the next six years. Of note here is that the SMD 2030 zero-carbon plan is actually not reflected in these figures, right? That's not a legislative adjustment. It's not a legislative mandate, so we didn't include that in the legislative forecast. But if SMD is able to actually reach that zero-carbon goal by 2030, those residential and non-residential electricity figures shown in the 2030 bar would decrease to zero. So in 2030, that would mean that the building sector emissions would then be approximately 26% of emissions for 2030. Regardless of whether SMD reaches that 2030 goal or not, there's still a significant gap between the overall emissions level forecast for 2030 and the state objective of 48% reduction, which you can see in that green bar where we would need to get to, to hit that goal. Then the last one is for the 2045 legislative-adjusted forecast. The overall emissions decreased fairly significantly, and then in that timeframe, the building sector emissions would make up the largest percent of our overall emissions at 52%. Largely, that's due to SB 100, which requires that all retail electricity sold in California in 2045 be renewable or zero-carbon sources, so that will reduce all of the emissions from the electricity sector down to zero. The building sector emissions here in 2045 are therefore just from natural gas, with, again, very small percent coming from backup generators. So even with those overall decreases in emissions, there's still a significant gap in 2045 to reach the state's objective of 85% reduction. So if we look across several years, so this shows our 2013 and 2021 greenhouse gas emission inventory, along with the 2030 and 2045 legislative-adjusted forecast just for the building sector. And you can see there's a small drop in per capita greenhouse gas emissions with that legislative-adjusted forecast in 2030, where it decreases to 1.97 metric tons of CO2 equivalent per capita. The further decline in per capita emissions in 2045 with the reduction of all the emissions from electricity is shown here, too, but again, just the emissions from the building sector are going to be higher than those state objectives in both years. And then one more data piece before we can move on from the data. This breaks out the natural gas legislative-adjusted forecast emission by the different types. So we were looking at residential and non-residential buildings, and then existing and new buildings. And by far, the largest natural gas emissions forecasts are coming from existing residential buildings for both 2030 and 2045. So with only the current enacted state and federal legislative action by 2045, new building, new residential buildings will account for the second-largest emissions in this sector, and then new non-residential will be the third. So before we get into the options for reducing emissions here, I did want to do a few legal and regulatory items to highlight. So I mentioned SB 100 that requires 60% of retail electricity sold in California be renewable or zero-carbon by 2030 and 100% by 2045, so that will be a helpful reduction. SB 1020 also provides sort of additional targets for that retail sale of electricity in those intervening years between 2030 and 2045. And then SB 305, sorry, SB 350 requires the state to double statewide energy efficiency savings in electricity and natural gas end uses by 2030. So those reductions are already accounted for in our forecast numbers that you saw. There's also the triennial update of the California Code of Regulations, Title 24. The 2025 code update is currently being finalized with an expected implementation date of January 1, 2026. The draft code requirements have some additional energy efficiency items. Those have not been included in the legislative reduction because they haven't yet been enacted, but they would help to do some support for reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And some of those include requiring new single-family residential construction to have heat pumps for both space and water heating appliances. It would require existing single-family residential to install a heat pump for air conditioning replacement or allow standard air conditioners with additional energy efficiency measures, and then also requiring non-residential additions or alterations to support heat pump, to install heat pump for small-package unit replacements or furnaces with, again, additional efficiency requirements. And these are all still in draft, so they won't be finalized till later this year, so we won't know actually which ones get enacted. Finally, I also wanted to mention a recent ruling by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals related to natural gas, following an ordinance by the city of Berkeley prohibiting the installation of natural gas piping in new construction, and then a subsequent lawsuit by the California Restaurant Associations. The Ninth Circuit Court ruled that Berkeley's ban was preempted by the Federal Energy Policy and Conservation Act, concluding that state and local governments cannot regulate the quantity of natural gas used by an appliance at the point of use. So this decision addressed only one approach to building decarbonization, a non-building code prohibition on gas infrastructure and new construction. Other approaches were not addressed by that decision, including air quality standards that regulate pollution emissions, REACH codes that encourage all-electric construction, or policies that require reduction in greenhouse gas emissions or air pollution from buildings, but provide for flexibility in how that is, those requirements are achieved. So with any of the potential strategies we discussed tonight, staff would be doing further work on the practical and then legal viability of those approaches as we do the additional analysis. So with the potential strategies we'll talk about, we actually broke them down into four categories, right? For new residential, existing residential, new non-residential, existing non-residential, because there could be, you know, some uniquenesses to different approaches to each of these different building types in terms of reducing their emissions. So we have put forward two potential options with each of these, and we'll talk about some of the various considerations that would impact enactment or implementation of those different options. So starting with new residential, these buildings make up about 25% of building sector emissions in 2045. All of that would be from natural gas. The current state legislation does not significantly reduce emissions from natural gas, so additional actions would be needed to see reductions here. So the potential strategies put forward include adopting a REACH code that would require all new residential construction and major renovations to meet or exceed a specific metric above the minimum building code obligation. Such a single-margin REACH code would be adopted based on cost-effectiveness studies and allows for flexibility in fuel source. It would set a specific energy design rating margin at a higher standard that would need to be met regardless of what fuel source, whether it was a mixed-fuel or all-electric home. This option would be consistent with what has been adopted in the city of Sacramento's cap and is currently in the draft county of Sacramento cap, which would make it a little bit easier for developers to have consistency across the region. Another option would be to increase the minimum percentage of new residential development that must be all-electric. The city's current 2019 cap requires that a minimum of 10% of new developments be all-electric. A review of residential A review of residential building permits for '23 and so far for '24 indicates that approximately forty-three percent of new developments are coming in as all-electric, so that's higher than our current minimum requirement. The city could increase this requirement. For example, we could require a minimum of, you know, eighty percent of units to be all-electric. While this option could have a high impact on greenhouse gas emissions, depending on what that minimum percentage is set to, there are a few drawbacks with it as well. It allows less flexibility in fuel sources, it would require that set number of all-electric. There could be some challenge with implementation, as it requires tracking on a building permit level, even though the requirement is for the entire development. And then there also could become some question if it could be legally challenged, given the Ninth Circuit Court ruling on regulating the quantity of natural gas. So for existing buildings, I'm going to show a little more data, sorry. I wanted to provide a little more to, before jumping into the strategies. We do have about fifty-five thousand or so residential units in Elk Grove, with about ninety-two percent of those being single fam, single units, and only about eight percent being in multi-unit buildings. For the single-unit buildings, the majority have been built within the past thirty years, with just about twenty-three percent being built prior to nineteen ninety-two. So a large portion of our single units are newer buildings. The multi-unit buildings, even more of those are newer, with just about eleven percent being built before nineteen ninety-two. So we have a large percentage that are newer in that area as well. And then in terms of the greenhouse gas emissions, this breakdown shows for existing buildings, the emissions for electricity and natural gas by year built. And that can help us understand homes that have a higher greenhouse gas emissions. So for single-unit residential, there's a much higher emission level for natural gas in those more recent buildings. And this isn't solely because there's more of the buildings, it's also because those natural gas emissions far outpaced electricity in those newer homes. So for the natural gas emissions in pre-nineteen ninety-one homes are about fifty percent more than electricity emissions, but in newer homes, the natural gas emissions are about double that of electricity. So existing residential buildings will make up about fifty-two percent of the building sector forecasted emissions, and about twenty-seven percent of overall emissions in 2045. So one potential strategy for these existing residential buildings would be to adopt a REACH code requiring higher energy efficiency requirements. The particular trigger for this REACH code could be time of retrofit or other trigger mechanisms, such as a specific timeframe. At that trigger, the existing residential building would need to include energy efficiency measures that meet a targeted cost-effectiveness score, with flexibility in terms of selection of what those measures would include. This strategy allows for flexibility in fuel source and on what measures to implement to meet the target score. It also is consistent, again, with the approach outlined in the county of Sacramento's draft cap. The staff resources needed to ensure compliance for this potential strategy are unknown, and so that would need to be identified with a future analysis if this strategy were of Another potential strategy for existing residential buildings would be to develop a comprehensive building energy retrofit plan for the decarbonization of existing residential buildings. So such a plan could address end-of-life recycling and disposal of gas appliances, policies, or programs that provide financial incentives to replace gas-powered appliances with electrical alternatives. The result of such a retrofit plan could be similar to the REACH code talked about as option one. This strategy would allow for a more comprehensive approach to the building decarbonization, though, for existing residential. It would also delay any implementation around existing residential decarbonization until after that plan were completed. And it's also unknown or uncertain in terms of what the reduction, emission reduction benefit, given the uncertainty on what specific obligations or standard would be included with that plan. So we will move to non-residential, starting with new non-residential buildings. These are a smaller percentage of the building sector forecast emissions, and they'll account for about thirteen percent of building sector emissions in 2045. One potential strategy to address this particular subsector would be to adopt a REACH code requiring all-new non-residential construction and major renovations to meet or exceed specific metrics above the minimum building code obligation. So this would be a similar approach to the potential strategy identified for new residential buildings. If this, with, as with that strategy as well, this one would also allow flexibility in fuel source to achieve that specific metric. Again, it's also regionally consistent with strategies including, included in the city of Sacramento and county of Sacramento documents. Another potential strategy for new non-residential buildings would be to encourage or require new construction projects to comply with CalGreen Tier One standards. This strategy would be consistent with our current 2019 cap. The greenhouse gas reduction potential for this strategy would be less than the other, the one just mentioned, for new non-residential based on the current CalGreen code. So it's unclear how much G H E reduction we would achieve with this, and if it would be sufficient to help us reach the state objectives. So our last grouping, existing non-residential buildings. They account for about eleven percent of forecasted building sector emissions in 2045. One potential strategy for reducing these emissions would be to adopt building energy performance ordinance. Such an ordinance would require existing non-residential buildings to reduce their non-electricity-related emissions by a specific percent over a set timeframe. So for example, requiring a fifty percent reduction in emissions by 2035 or other specific date. This building performance standard could be applied to a specific set of covered buildings, so for example, doing non-residential buildings that are greater than fifty thousand square feet. Such an ordinance is consistent with the, again, with the approach in the city of Sacramento's existing building electrification strategy and the county draft cap. It also allows flexibility on how the emission reductions are achieved for building owners. There would need to be additional analysis done on, again, staff resources to ensure compliance with such an ordinance. And then one final idea to put forward for existing non-residential buildings would be to, again, develop a comprehensive building energy retrofit plan to decarbonize existing non-residential buildings. So as with existing, such a plan for existing residential buildings, this could address end-of-life recycling, disposal of gas appliances, and/or programs that provide financial incentives to replace gas-powered appliances with electric alternatives. Such a comprehensive plan could be done concurrently, so for both existing residential and non-residential buildings all at one time. But again, the strategy would, the benefit of this strategy would be a more comprehensive approach to decarbonizing our existing buildings. As with the plan for existing residential, it would delay any implementation of strategies to decarbonize the existing buildings until the plan was completed, and then it would be a little bit more uncertain in terms of how much greenhouse gas reduction potential we would achieve with such a strategy. And then finally, just a summary of the two potential options we provided by the different building types. So for new residential, single-margin REACH code, or increasing the minimum all-electric percentage for development. For existing residential, adopting a higher energy efficiency REACH code on retrofit, or developing a more comprehensive building decarbonization plan. For new non-residential, adopting, again, a REACH code requiring a higher metric above the minimum building code obligation to be met, or encouraging or requiring new construction projects to comply with CalGreen Tier One. For existing non-residential buildings, adopting a building performance standard ordinance, or developing, again, a comprehensive building decarbonization plan. So this is, again, not a full list of potential strategies, so other ideas are, can be entertained as we look forward on, towards the analysis. So staff tonight is seeking input and direction from council on the various ideas presented to undertake further analysis and do the quantification of greenhouse gas reduction potential. And unless there's any specific concerns identified with some of these strategies, which we're happy to hear about, we can continue to evaluate all the different options in the plan as it's developed. And with that, I am available for any questions.
All right. Thank you for that very thorough presentation. At this time, I will open up public comment opportunity. We have two people signed up to speak. We will start with Josh Hogan, followed by Vance Gerard.
Good evening. My name is Josh Hogan. I am here on behalf of the Sacramento Association of Realtors, which represents nearly seven thousand members. First, I want to express our appreciation for taking into consideration the homeowner's perspective. Addressing climate change is an urgent and vital issue, and we commend Elk Grove for taking proactive steps in this area. However, it is crucial to ensure that our fight against climate change does not inadvertently place undue burdens on homeowners and prospective homeowners within our communities. Anytime homeownership cost increase, costs increase, there is a disproportionate effect on first-time homebuyers striving to build generational wealth through homeownership. We support the end-of-life replacement process and a program to recycle old appliances. We urge you to keep in mind that if the process is confusing or cumbersome, residents will not engage. The retrofit process can be daunting and overwhelming for many homeowners. Education is key in this regard. Homeowners need clear information about these processes, especially before their appliances fail or need replacement. The Sacramento Association of Realtors is well-positioned to partner in educating realtors who can then relay this information to their clients, your residents. We look forward to a continued conversation on how we implement solutions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions while maintaining a sustainable housing market that remains affordable. Thank you for attention, for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Next up is Vance Gerard.
It's a long jog from the back. I'm going to sit closer next time. Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Vance Gerard with the North State Building Industry Association, representing more than five hundred members in the homebuilding industry. I want to thank Carrie and her team for including us in the technical advisory group that's been helping shape this discussion over the past year. Her and her team have put in a lot of work, and I've met a lot of great new staff at the city of Elk Grove that I hadn't met previously, so that has been great. We appreciate the opportunity to assist in developing such important policies, two of which tonight would impact new residential buildings. As is the case with all such policies, we strive for outcomes that promote a clean and healthy environment while protecting an affordable and attainable housing supply. We see challenges with the proposals of a REACH code or electric mandate and their ability to impact housing costs, but I understand that from here, this is a discussion point, and there is still research and refining to be done. The B I A and our members are grateful for the opportunity to continue supporting efforts to find the best solution and provide insight and information when needed. I look forward to the continued discussion and remaining available to you and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Vance.
Remember, I have a question for Vance, if you don't mind.
Yes, sure.
Sit up front next time. No, I'm just kidding. The numbers were surprising to me that the new home construction was forty-three percent electric. Can you, or are you able to talk to, or speak to, the trend of the industry right now?
In general, I would say that the trend is going toward more electric overall. I think home builders see that there is a desire for it in the market and a push from the state to head in that direction. At the same time, I wouldn't say that there's institutionalized resistance to it, more so concerns over supply chain issues, the ability of P G and E and S M U D to provide the transformers that we need to meet the capacity demand of all-electric communities. So there's a lot of logistical obstacles to overcome before we can get to a fully all-electric communities throughout.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right. I'm going to close the public comment opportunity, and council comments deliberations, direction, I'll start to the left, council member soon.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions for Carrie. Appreciate, again, the presentation, a lot of data in there trying to digest. What I wanted to start with was the, you had a whole list of state bills and policies that, if I heard you correctly, some of which have yet to be adopted. I'm kind of curious as to, you know, there's a part of me that says, well, we should let some of these things happen, and let's, let's see what, you know, what the results are. So I wonder if you could elaborate on the implementation of ones that haven't happened yet in terms of, and I know you don't, you won't know precisely, but maybe an estimate of, how long is it going to take before we see what the effects of these policies are?
So for all of the different S Bs that I mentioned, those were, have already been enacted, and so were already considered in our forecasted legislative adjusted forecast. So those state bills were included.
Okay.
What's still outstanding is the 2025 building code, the triennial update to the building code. My understanding is that those items that I articulated are in the draft. They are going to the C E C for consideration in September, and then, see, Rod is nodding his head, so I'm assuming I'm right on this. And then they should be adopted by the Building Standards Commission, I want to say, in December. There is always a chance that they could change, but these are the ones that have gone through all of the rulemaking already and are just in those final stages of adoption.
And, pardon us if you mentioned this already, but do you, of those codes, is there any projection of G H G reduction from that?
So those would have a bigger impact in terms of new buildings.
Okay.
And so we haven't yet quantified, but we could look at, you know, what kind of actually impact would they have for those.
Okay.
Yeah. They're not likely to get us as far, there's a pretty significant gap, even for 2030, so they're not likely to get us as far as we need to go, but they could have some reduction.
Okay. And is that, is that like a five-year before you can see what the effects are, or a year?
So the building code wouldn't even go into effect until 2026, January 2026. So it would be sometime before you would see a lot of impact from those because of how long it takes for those new buildings to, to come to, to get permitted and all of that.
Yeah. So it'll be the pace of construction that, okay. And then in terms of the retrofit on existing construction, do you have any estimate in terms of a single-family home, I'm replacing blenders, I'm putting solar on? Do you have an idea of, you know, thirty thousand dollars will get me, get us to a converted existing home? Do we have any type of estimate there?
I do not. It is something we can talk to Ascent about doing, or consultant about doing, some kind of a, for an average, you know, size home in Elk Grove, what that would look like.
Okay. And then the bang for the buck for which, you know, what element you're converting?
Right. We wanted, yes, we can talk about whether there are certain appliances, there tend to be five, four appliances that are, can be gas, water heaters, stoves, space heating, and then dryers. And so we can talk to them about what kind of impact does each appliance have? Do one, certain ones have a bigger impact than others?
Okay. And then similarly for the non-residential as well?
Yeah. The non-residential is a much smaller natural gas number, as you saw, but yeah, we could look at what are the primary gas appliances there, and which ones would have the biggest impact. I would say probably the space heating with those as well, but we can look at that also.
Okay. And then also on the, the existing non-residential, is there a certain square footage that, that you would want to convert in order to, to make it worthwhile?
I think we would want to look at that as part of the analysis. There is state legislation, at least around benchmarking for energy for buildings that are above the fifty thousand square foot. So that would give us some information that we could then build from, you know, if we wanted to do a threshold of a certain building level, but that would be part of the analysis we would want to do in terms of how many buildings of different sizes. of different sizes, and where would we want to focus that.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. So, and so I'm, you know, in terms of strategy, I guess, you know, what I'm, there's a couple of things that I'm, that I'm pondering as we're, you were, from this data. You know, one is do we, letting the new building code take effect, but also having a, you know, a suite of options here for that, that existing homeowners could retrofit and the costs associated with that, similarly for non-residential. But also because I hate unfunded mandates. So I feel like we, the city, need to pony up, if you will, a little bit. So some sort of grant programs or something that we would budget for ourselves annually. It's not going to be, you know, all at once, of course, but, you know, this is a conversion over time. But something to that effect, where we would have a program that we might be willing to match, or something that would incentivize this type of conversion for our existing residents, especially since there's, there's so many existing homes and it has such a great, great impact. And for the new construction, you could let the building codes take effect and work with the industry to, you know, make, ensure that there is a framework or, you know, that there is, there are available transformers, that supply chain issues are, are not, maybe not resolved, but at least to some degree minimized. But having those types of conversations. So those are, those are my, my initial thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's see, Vice Mayor Burr?
Yeah. It looks like Councilmember Soon hit on some pretty good points, especially as we're trying to find ways to create incentives for, for homeowners who, in existing, in existing houses, to make the conversion. Just recently, I, I was like, I've, I've done a conversion on my, on my air conditioning unit because that, because it, it pretty much ran its full life cycle. And so doing the conversion from, from an electric gas HVAC unit to all-electric, it, it's a pretty big endeavor. And with the retrofits that take place with it, even though they seem minor, the, the transformation is, is pretty substantial. And it does come with incentives, and the financing that comes with it is really, is based upon your credit. And so working with the, the banks to figure out some sort of strategy to help make incentives more, more attractive for, for homeowners would be important, especially as your credit is factored into how much you would receive financing for. Because obviously with, with the new homes, under the million solar roofs mandate, and there's a push to increase a million to 2 million, a lot of those all-electric retrofits will take place. And it's just a matter of how can we make it affordable for first-time homebuyers as they move through the push to have their first home before they move into their forever home? And for, for the, for the current homes as they, as we undergo the retrofits, it's just trying to figure out how can we make the incentives less painful for, for homeowners along the way, and on the residential side. On the non-residential side, I think we will see more on the energy conversions, the retrofits. We'll see more electrification take place in that respect. It's just, is, is making sure that it's, that, that we do it in a way that's going to be thoughtful, having industry at the table, and just trying to figure that, that maze out and, and making it workable. As a, as a municipal government agency, we're, we're, we're looking at and kind of beholden to what the Energy Commission does on the REACH codes. And so it's, it's, however, we can implement what is being given to us and whatever, and as we provide our recommendations to the Energy Commission, along with other cities. I know the League of California Cities is working earnestly in that effort as well. So hopefully, the Energy Commission comes back with something in terms of regulations or that, that can really make this more, more able to do. Because the push for 2045 and becoming all-electric, I know SMUD's pushes 2030, so, and it looks like the Sacramento region is moving pretty, pretty stridently on its way. But as things get closer, it's that, it's the last 2% is the hardest to achieve. And so we want to do what we can to make sure that we realistically can achieve those goals. And if we're unable to achieve those goals, how much time do we actually need? Do we need five years? Do we need seven or eight years? Because that's going to be important for us to really make that maximum effort and, and really drive down those GHG emissions, the intensity of those GHG emissions, and get us to, to that, to that goal. But that's going to, getting to that last, those final, final percentage points is going to be the hardest part, because now we're, right now, we're getting the low-hanging fruit. And as we get closer to it, that's when we're really going to have to start making those wholesale adjustments and making sure that we're reaching those goals. So, no, this was a good, this was a good overview as we look at the building energy sector today. This is very healthy, and, but as we, and I'm glad we're working with, with, with the BIA and the Realtors and other industry and other stakeholders to figure out how this can work for, for us, as a city. Because it's a, it's, as we, as we continue down doing this climate compass, it's really looking for the long-term goal in mind, and, and it looks like we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Spees?
Okay. All right. So these, these descriptions or titles are a bit of an, of an abstraction, so I'm going to kind of try to use my real-world understanding of these and make sure I understand these. If we're talking about a restaurant, I would assume that would be classified as a non-residential development, right? Okay. So we'll, we'll start there. So has, are, we have, have we had the opportunity perhaps to include the Restaurant Association as part of this conversation, and perhaps we could for the future?
Yeah. We haven't reached out to them because we're still sort of in that discussion, but we will be reaching out to them as we move forward with analysis and thinking about what we would actually want to.
Okay. I don't, I don't think your mic is on, so if they're recording, they probably can't pick it up. That's okay. Okay. So if I was building a new restaurant, that'd be new development, non-residential. So it allows flexibility in fuel, so you would be able to, you'd be able to develop with gas or with electric, correct?
Right. If you're looking at the first option, right?
IDA non-res, new one?
Yes.
Right. Okay. So they could do what they needed there. Okay. And, let's see, so I think those, that was my question specific, oh, okay. So that's, that's new. Now, if I had an existing restaurant and I wanted to, I don't know, increase the size of the kitchen, would that in, in some way trigger the need to move to an electric stove or something like that? I guess where I get concerned is I, I talk to a lot of folks who, who say, and ADA is a very, very good thing to have, and I'm not disparaging ADA in any way, shape, or form. However, there are times you say, I need to increase the size of my kitchen, and that can sometimes trigger ADA improvements. Does this in any way, you know, increasing the size of a square foot of, of a kitchen or something like that, would this somehow trigger the need for additional spending for, I don't know, electric stoves or better washing machines? I just want to be sure that we're not backing ourselves into a problem.
So it would really depend on how we wrote it. With what we have here, right, it's fairly flexible. The new, for the new non-resident, sorry, the new non-residential option one, if it were considered a major renovation, and we would need to come up with what's that, you know, threshold of, of saying it's a major.
Sure.
Then you would want to say, yes, it would meet that, or need to meet or exceed that specific threshold.
Right.
But again, we wouldn't say you couldn't do a gas stove. You would say, overall, with this renovation, you would need to meet this metric in however you want to do that.
So if they do something like increasing the square feet, you could intentionally trigger them to have to do?
Depending on if it's considered a major, right? It's not just if you're adding 100 square feet, if you're, right, what would be that threshold for a major?
Yeah.
And Councilmember, just real quick, there's other things beyond just the kitchen equipment in a restaurant space. You've got HX system, hot water heater, so there's other mechanical equipment that could be involved in that calculation.
Right. Absolutely. And so with that, I could ask, please, if we could try to get the Restaurant Association involved in that, because I don't want to get further down the road and then suddenly we get sideslapped with, with that. That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be fun. So I think that does it for me with the non-residential, but let me kind of turn that back, those sorts of questions back to, so on a new development, those are new homes that are being built, and you have flexibility in fuel, we're not mandating electric or gas, right?
Right.
Okay. That's good. Can you, and I, and I might have spaced out at the time when we talked about the, let's go to IDEA res new two, the, I forget what you're calling it, considerations. Legally questionable, given the Ninth Circuit Court decision, can you, I might have missed when you explained that.
So the Ninth Circuit Court decision was on the City of Berkeley, and John, feel free to jump in if I get this wrong.
I can, I can explain. So what happened was the City of Berkeley decided they weren't going to regulate electrical appliances directly, because that would be preempted by federal law. So they did something that was a little bit creative. And they said, we're not going to regulate the electrical appliances directly, but we're not going to allow gas to be piped into the buildings. So we're regulating it sort of indirectly. And then Ninth Circuit said, I see what you're doing.
It's kind of obvious at that point, yeah.
And they said, you can't regulate it indirectly in a way that you, you, you would be prohibited from regulating it directly. And Carrie's right, the, the holding of the case is relatively narrow as to the regulation at play in that case, which is what courts do. They typically answer the most narrow question possible, so as not to make a broader precedent than, than intended. But what it does do is it starts to question how far are cities and agencies allowed to go in light of this ruling when it comes to trying to electrify facilities? We know what we can't do. We're not entirely sure what we can do. And so as we start to look at the different programs, the different policies, and what we can do from, if the city chooses to start limiting, if not eliminating, gas appliances and moving more towards electricity in the name of combating global warming, the lines are not entirely clear in light of this Ninth Circuit case. So we're treading a bit carefully.
Okay. All right. Interesting. All right. Well, I'll, I'll leave that one off for right now then, I guess. But so my next one, all right, goes to existing development. So kind of in the, in the same vein as the restaurant question, if I am someone who is renovating my home and I want to, I don't know, add square feet or whatever, a major change, are, are we suggesting that then they must change or do some other type of energy improvements at the same time? Because what I'm driving at is you, you just like shove the cost of renovations right through the roof to a homeowner when you do that.
Right. And so again, it would be sort of how do we write the, the requirement? You know, do we want to write the requirement to be more flexible and, and have sort of a, either a higher threshold for what a major renovation would be before it kicks in, or do we want to write it in some other way? So it would just be about what are, right, part of this is what your direction is and what would, we would be interested in doing as we further identify or develop this.
Okay. Well, I guess I could, I could park there that I, I mean, if we're making suggestions on what the tone we would like to hear is that I certainly would not like to add additional costs or restrictions to a homeowner who is simply trying to, I don't know, upgrade the, the countertop. I, I don't, I don't know what that trigger would be, right? So I, I don't, I don't think, I think you would, I think you would stifle the opportunity for people to improve their homes, because you'd simply drive the cost, or we, I'm not going to say you, would drive the cost significantly up. And, all right, the next thing is at, I wouldn't be of something, in favor of something at a point of sale, right? So if we made some sort of trigger at, at the point where we're selling, where someone is selling a home and you say you must upgrade the energies, I'm certainly not in favor of that. And so we need to be certain that that's, that's not in there. Because if someone's trying to sell a home, it is not the time to throw additional stuff into the works. So I think that, well, and so I guess on the restaurant stuff, I have my own opinions, but I, I guess I would just ask if we could get the Restaurant Association involved a bit, please.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And Carrie, I can help you with the Restaurant Association. I know the folks out there. Great. Councilmember Robles?
Thank you, Carrie, for the presentation. Truly super informative, super data-driven, and appreciative. Echoing my fellow councilmembers' comments, I think it's super important that we engage with other associations as well. Thank you to the BIA and for Sacramento Association of Realtors being out here. You guys are looking forward, right? Looking for the next buyer, for, for first-time buy, first-time homebuyers. I think many folks aren't thinking, like, when I'm going to buy a new home, it has to be all-electric. And I think that's something that we definitely need a voice and, and make sure that we're communicating that effectively with all residents and especially business owners. SMUD, actually, I received a text message earlier today asking if there was a restaurant that would be willing to go all-electric, like SMUD would, would finance and pay for it. That's a good opportunity. I know that they're going to be one of our partners to kind of see how, how it goes, because not, it's not a one-size-fits-all, right? So as we're doing this, just being very diligently and making sure we're not causing more of an issue for our community, then, then we already, yes, we're going to our clean energy and definitely zero emissions, but I think we also have to look like, who are we hurting? And if it's going to be our future residents, we ought to implement it, you know, incrementally. For the Sacramento County, is that just a draft, or have they finalized their stuff?
No, it's still just in draft. I think they're taking public comment till the?
The 29th.
29th, yes.
29th. Okay. And then that, so I'm assuming once the county, Sacramento, and then us, and then everybody else is going to follow. Like Councilmember Spees said, just kind of engage with different associations and let's just make sure that we're not affecting the first-generation business owners, first-generation restaurants, in a time when they're closing all over the region. We want to make sure that they're being taken care of, making sure that the first-time homebuyers are taken care of, and also the residents that will be here. So, thank you, and so.
All right. Great comments from my colleagues. So what I'm hearing are just some general themes from hearing all of your comments. There's one, we want to be good stewards as a city and do our share, obviously, to meet these goals. But the, but balancing the practical versus the legal viability and the mandates, that's the greatest challenge that we see here. So we want to implement reasonable strategies, and there's room for what, what does reasonable mean? And causing undue harm for business owners, for homeowners, obviously, is, that's going to be the balancing act. So to continue to have those meetings with the key stakeholders is, is critical. You know, whenever I hear mandates, the, the people I always think of are those with limited means, be it for an upgrade, you know, I appreciate, you know, you upgraded, you got a new air conditioning unit and the, you know, which was one of the hottest summers, but that, I imagine, what, $30,000, $40,000 hit? Not everyone can, can do that. And so I worry about our low-income families being able to pay for these kinds of mandates. So that's, you know, and be it electric vehicles, whatever, you know, until electric vehicles become affordable for the everyday person, it's a lofty goal, but it's not practical. So these are great metrics, they're great things to strive for, but again, it's that balancing act with our community. So I appreciate the, the presentation, and please, you know, like I said, I'll reach out for the contacts with the Restaurant Association, but making sure that we have adequate stakeholder engagement on these kinds of issues is critical. And I, to share with Councilmember Soon, that these unfunded mandates, how do we meet, meet us, you know, meet them at this moment here? And maybe we do need to look at what kind of grants or what kind of opportunities might exist, so that particularly those that cannot afford it are able to make these changes without breaking their pocketbook. So thank you for your great presentation, and I continue to do the outreach. You're doing great. Appreciate the work. All right. With that, we will move on to our next item.
That'll be item 9.2, which is to receive an update on city council priority projects and provide direction as desired.
and provide direction as desired.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Femi Omotesho, management analyst with the City Managers Office, and I'm here to provide an update on the city council priority projects. First, I would like to give a background of how we got to be here today. The city council conducted its biennial retreat on March 10, 2023, where it reviewed and updated its goals for the following two years and identified strategic initiatives to address them. The city council adopted the mission, vision, goals, and priority projects at its April 12, 2023 meeting. To implement the mission, vision, and goals, the city identified projects deemed high priority. Staff reports on the progress of implementing these priority projects twice a year. So this update I'm providing today covers the period through July 2024. The city mission statement is here shows that it provides exceptional services that enhance the quality of life of our residents and promote a thriving economy in an efficient and cost-effective manner. The vision statement is that Elk Grove prioritizes a superior quality of life for all that builds upon the community's diversity and heritage through safe, welcoming, and connected neighborhoods with a variety of residential, educational, and employment choices and amenities that create a sense of place. So the mission and vision stated are supported by four goals. And the four goals are listed here. The first one is a vibrant community, sustainable and sustainable economy with diverse businesses and amenities. The second one is a safe and resilient community, a high-performing and financially-stable city government, and a city with infrastructure that meets its current and future needs. These listed goals, each one is reinforced by four to six supporting statements. Details can be found on the city's website. So the, in implementing the mission goals and the mission, vision, and goals, we implement them through our priority projects. Thirty projects were identified or deemed high priority. And presentation, like I'm here presenting this report, we have it twice a year. And the priority projects are categorized into five areas of, five major categories. First one being civic amenities, transportation, community development, community safety, and city operations. Would like to identify some of these major accomplishments. Of course, we can't identify a lot of them, but some chosen to highlight today. So the first one is the zoo. The zoos, I mean, we secured a city council approval for the zoo, for the new zoo in Elk Grove, along with related project approvals for the cost-sharing agreement and design contracts for design, development, and construction design work. This comes under the A2 part of the high priority project. The city council approved the project on May 8, 2024, and on June 26, 2024, it approved the cost-sharing agreement along with design contracts for design, development, and construction development work, which will begin later this summer. Partner funding cultivating is presently ongoing. The next high priority project that is being highlighted is the traffic signal cabinet. Initiated upgrades to traffic signal cabinet, transitioning to fiber optic and/or cellular services to increase bandwidth, thereby improving signal synchronization and traffic operations while reducing congestion. The construction contract was fully executed on June 28, June 18, 2024. The city had held a preliminary project kickoff meeting with contractor, with a contractor. However, some materials and equipment are long lead items, so site construction will depend on material delivery. Anticipated to begin onsite construction at the end of 2024 or early '25, with a targeted completion in 2025. The next accomplishment being highlighted is the completed efforts to revitalize the railroad corridor with restaurant, entertainment, and residential uses. The project is 100% complete, and it's included transforming the historic heart of Elk Grove. We have the preservation of historic buildings, where we now have the Dust Bowl and Slow and Low. The courtyard urban residential project, construction of Old Town Plaza, and reconstructed railroad street and public parking. There was, I mean, there's continued working with Cosumnes CSD to undertake a pilot program for GPS-based emergency vehicle routing and signal preemption to improve fire and EMS response time. The city entered into agreement with LYT for GPS emergency vehicle preemption in early 2024. The system became fully operational in May 2024 and is showing good preliminary results indicating signals are being preempted much quicker than the original Opticon light of line-of-sight technology, which is running concurrently. The picture here, if you can see clearly, on the screen shows a fire truck on a call headed eastbound with signals of Laguna Spring and Elk Grove Boulevard and Auto Center Drive and Elk Grove Boulevard already preempted in their direction. This new LYT system is preempting the signal for emergency vehicles on average 19 seconds sooner than the old Opticon line-of-sight system. And this is allowing more time for the queue of vehicles to dissipate. If there are additional questions on that respect later, I think Mr. Ashby is here to tell us more about that. So in continuation, I want to talk about the digital, improving the digital experience for city customer. Staff continues working on improving the digital experiences for city customers on the online services portion of the city website. Staff are participating on a customer advisory board for the city's ERP software company to provide input for improvement on the next release of the online software around January of 2025. Staff cleaned up the online services links and information on our current website to reflect work that has been done, such as story maps, such as storyboard. Recently, we implemented the Power BI that we allow for online sharing of dashboards. Staff are working on setting up the public-facing portal and will work with departments to identify what reports can be shared in a centralized location. And the picture we are looking at right now on the screen shows a glimpse of the Power BI dashboard with the location at which building permits were issued, along with the total number of permits issued between January 1, 2024 to the date that the image was captured. We have about 3,098 permits showing. So lastly, what are the next steps? The council will review the mission, vision, goals, and priority project at its next retreat. And the city council's retreat is planned for February or March 2025. And that's the end of the update.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will open up public comment opportunity. No one has signed up to speak to this, so I'll close the comment, public comment opportunity. And any questions, comments, direction? I'll start to the right this time, Councilmember Robles.
No questions, but thank you so much for that update. It looks like our city is going in the right direction and super excited about the future.
Councilmember Spies?
Thank you, Dr. Femi. I can't see you, you're hiding behind that. But thank you very much, Dr. Femi, I appreciate it. Maybe only one thing we could add for next time is make sure we put our big Measure E symbols on there for, right, so that we can let people know that we are doing great things for them with Measure E. But again, thank you very much, I appreciate the update.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
No, it's, I think everything is moving in the right direction. Really good overview of where we're at progress-wise, some really good news. And as Councilmember Spies said, yeah, definitely continue showing where Measure E is providing that added amount of benefit for the community and for the, as taxpayers, because that leveraged on top of what we already have in our general fund shows that we are being responsive and responsible for the public. But this is, this is good information and great progress report on where we're going. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Suren?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Femi, for the report. It's exciting to see, we have so many things going on. The font is very small on this paper, there's so many projects. But I'm especially excited to see the progress, and I look forward to upping the percentage of completion for Project Elevate, for Camera Road, that, you know, at 10 and 30%, respectively. I was excited when I said, but it's good to see that the light synchronization is at 75%. We're, so we're almost there. I have seen some improvements, and so it'll be neat to, when it's finally done, to see what that does for traffic congestion. And other than that, yeah, like my colleagues have already said, a lot of great things happening here, and we're moving in the right direction. So thank you for all your hard work, everybody.
Thank you to my colleagues. Great work, staff, great presentation, Dr. Femi, I appreciate it, great progress report. We love Elk Grove. Thank you. We will move on to our next items. And that is council comments, reports, future agenda items. I will start to the right. Councilmember Robles?
Nothing to report out. We did have a sex tour meeting, but nothing, so.
Councilmember Spies?
Got nothing to add today on the reports. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No reports today.
Councilmember Suren?
All right, thank you, Mayor. We have our state hall meeting tomorrow. One thing I wanted to ask my colleagues, if you guys be comfortable with, I was brought to my attention that SB 329 dealing with council stipends took effect in January. So I'd like to ask staff to put together a report to see what that means for our city and as well as any options for us to take.
I'd be in favor of that.
Sure.
Good to that.
Yep, yep, we'll have a discussion.
Thank you.
And I waive report, so thank you, everyone. We will adjourn this meeting at 8:05 PM. Have a good evening.